The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent it to the Courier News and Taffington Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise with the right of allegiance.
All right, I will call the roll this time, Mr. Desai.
Yes.
Mrs. Whitebaum. Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta. Mr. Otto.
Here.
Mr. Tor.
Yeah.
Mr. Valentino. Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yeah.
We have a call.
Ms. Keller.
It's all that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Sir.
I'll call the roll, Mr. Desai.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mr. Tor.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
And Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Nothing to report in correspondence on the HIV information. There were two investigations at Central School, one to be determined incident, one investigation at ALT, not determined to be a bullying incident. And on a suspension report, there was one in school and one out of school suspension. Those are both at the middle school. And that's it for that section.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome everyone, particularly our athletes that are with us here this evening. So happy to have you here. On behalf of the board, I want to extend our appreciation and gratitude to the Somerset County Cultural and Heritage Commission for its grant award in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, which will be used for the transportation of our fourth graders to historical sites in Warren. I also want to draw attention to two retirements that appear on tonight's agenda. Luis Marcuscano will be retiring after serving in the district for twenty-five years, and Patty Pillinger will be retiring after nearly twenty-nine years. I'm always amazed and awed by the members of our staff that have given most or all of their professional careers to the children and families of our district. I can't thank them enough and extend all the best wishes as they move into retirement. Also, I also want to extend thanks to the Central New Jersey Chinese American Association's Alliance, who extended an invitation to myself and Dr. Mingle to the Central New Jersey Regional Lunar New Year Festival. It took place on Saturday, February seventeenth. Pretty amazing. If you guys get a chance to attend next year, I would highly encourage you to do that. The performers were magnificent. The music was truly wonderful. So a sincere thanks to them for that invitation. And with that, Dr. Mingle, your remarks.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our championship basketball team. We're happy to have you here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Vilar, Ms. Mensinger, I see Mr. Lormore in the back, and of course, Coach Fabiano of all our players, family members. We're happy that you're here tonight. I'll save other comments about the agenda till we get to the agenda. Let's get right to the celebration.
Yes, let's get to the celebration. Mr. Vilar, I think you're our emcee for this? Master of Ceremonies?
I think I have to wait for the camera. Not that I want that. So, Dr. Mingle, members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight. To begin with, I'd like to point out that there are athletes who are competing professionally, who in their entire lives have never won a championship. It is a rare, rare thing to come by and something that that we should take a moment and pause and recognize when it happens. And it was no small feat that that our girls' basketball team went through. The Franklin team that they defeated in the championship was undefeated on the season. So this was, right, by chalk, right? It says they win. But what we witnessed a couple of weeks ago was something very different that we're very proud of our athletes for what they have accomplished. They did it through through two things. Teamwork, learning to work cohesively as a group, and depending upon and communicating with each other. And then, of course, the leadership of Coach Fabiano and his directions and his guidance over the course of the season, which they take to heart and and put on the court. And I would like to say something personally about the girls is that in addition to their great play on the court, these are also exemplary and model students within our hallways in our school community. And so the lessons learned there carry over into the school, and that's the reason we do middle school sports. And we're very proud for that. These girls aren't just winning at basketball, they're winning at life. And so congratulations. I'll turn things over to Mr. Fabiano.
Thank you, Mr. Vilar. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Thank you to everyone on the board. Like Mrs. Vilar said, this is a special group that we had. Four of the eighth graders were with me in the first season that I coached, Free, Maya, Jolie, and Dia. And I knew just from then and potentially had in sixth grade that this would be a special year, their eighth grade year, and then supporting cast of the seventh and sixth graders, a really special team. And like I said at Town Hall, when we had, we recognized there, it was an amazing game. The level of intensity, the perseverance that they showed on the court, especially going to Franklin, which is not the easiest place to play. It was remarkable. It was in the crowd that was there, the support from the parents. It was it was amazing. So I can't be more proud of these girls and what they have done over the course of the season and how they they brought this championship. First, we have Maya Rubens. Free and okay. She had twenty-three points in the finals. Jolie Anderson. Dia Prabakar. Ava Traynor. Chloe Kibane. Marley Edwards. Haley Soiber. Genevieve Cowell. Natalia Zielonka. Jane Laverrier. And last but not least, Sonia Prabakar. Congrats, girls. You deserve it.
Yes.
Yes. Girls, if you wouldn't mind, let's get a picture of you, so.
Sure.
Yeah, you guys are included.
Bishop.
We left it for him.
Yeah, there's another phone.
There's another phone in the front row. White case.
Okay.
We're used to it.
Yeah.
That's happened.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Congrats.
Pretty good question.
Well, that's a very hard act to follow. And it's the best part of being a member of the Board of Education, actually, is to be able to celebrate all of the tremendous achievements of our students. Moving on, we do not have a discussion scheduled for this evening, so committee reports will be next. Curriculum and Technology Committee has not had a meeting that may be reported out. So Finance, Operations, and Security, please. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, February twentieth, with two committee members and the alternate present. The meeting lasted approximately two hours, and I'm going to break down the readout into sections and ask for comments or discussion from the board on some of these topics. The first item that we addressed was the Safety and Security Five-Year Action Plan. Mr. Hagel had presented a five-year security plan for the years twenty-four through twenty-two ninety-nine for the district based on the recommendations and the report from the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, which was received last year. The plan includes a report on action items that have been completed to date, as well as action items for the future and items that will be included in the capital improvement plan. Board members can access confidential security review documents in person at the board office. This is also an opportunity to remind the public that walking through school grounds during school hours, whether walking a dog or taking a shortcut, is trespassing, and the administration will be following up on signage on the path to my middle school. So to alert anybody who uses that path that they shouldn't be using it during school hours. Moving on to the preschool program. As many of you should know, the lottery for our preschool program for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year has taken place and waitlist has been established. Some of the students that received seats in the program, i.e. they won the lottery, are also students that are eligible for free lunch under one of the ways we determine that eligibility, either direct certification or federal or state eligibility requirements. As a public school district and board, we place high priority on equal access to all of the district's programs for all of our students. For general education students, the preschool program is a tuition-paying program. The Finance Committee supports a proposal that the twenty-four, twenty-five budget include a maximum of twenty thousand dollars for preschool tuition subsidy. The subsidy will be budget neutral due to the efficiencies and changes to preschool transportation. The subsidy will be open to preschool families who are eligible for no-cost lunches. The amount of subsidy per family will be based on the number of eligible students, but will not exceed fifty percent of the cost of tuition. And this is a reminder that the twenty-four, twenty-five tuition was set at a previous board meeting at ninety-five hundred dollars. So that is a maximum of seven fifty. The change to preschool transportation is that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we will not be able to offer preschool transportation for a fee to general education students. Last year, bus seats were available for a fee. However, that has become problematic as additional special education students are added throughout the school year. Eliminating fee-based transportation frees up seats for mid-year additions to the special education preschool program. The committee also supports an administrative proposal that free seats be offered to gen ed students that are eligible for tuition subsidy. At this point, I want to pause to allow the, any board member to ask questions or comments on the preschool tuition subsidy program. Seeing no questions or comments on that, I do want to say that I'm really proud of us as a district, honestly, that we're making these funds available for some of our needy students. So moving on, the next topic of conversation was the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Pardon me. At this time, we are still waiting for two critical pieces of information that are necessary to finalize the budget, the inflation rate for transportation, and state aid. By the end of this week, we should have these remaining pieces of information. Based on information currently available, I can comfortably say to the public that the tax levy for twenty-four, twenty-five budget will likely exceed two percent, but will be meaningfully lower than the levy of last year, which was five point nine nine percent. The next steps in this process would be the receipt of the state aid number, which will happen later this week, followed by the meetings with individual board members in small groups to go over the budget. The preliminary budget presentation will take place for the public on March eighth. We will then have a public committee meeting where the Finance Committee will make itself available for Q and A sessions with the public on March twenty-sixth. And the final budget hearing and adoption is scheduled for April twenty-ninth. Pause here. Does any member of the board have any questions about the status of our budget process? Okay. Moving on. Several weeks ago, the administration was informed by the town clerk that due to an increase in registered voters and capacity issues at previously used polling locations, there would, they would need, there would need to be changes to the polling locations in town going forward, and specifically for the June fourth primary and the November fifth general election. It is the responsibility of the township's election official to secure polling locations. We have been advised that ALT, Mount Florib, and the middle school have been identified as new polling locations. We also understand that Washington Hills Regional High School has also been identified as a polling location. A meeting took place earlier this month between the district administration and district security, together with town representatives and representatives of the Warren Township Police Department. Now, the purpose of the meeting was to identify and address any concerns about the use of school buildings for polling. The Warren Township Police Department has committed to providing a police officer in each school facility on Election Day while school is in session, with the primary focus being on ensuring that no one comes to vote, who comes to vote gains access to other areas of the building. Additionally, the Warren Police will provide additional police officers to support traffic flow and external security during arrival and dismissal. The town and the district will work together to publicize times when traffic is expected to be heavy, to discourage voters from coming during those times. All poll workers will be screened through the visitor management system prior to Election Day and will be the only individuals with access to bathrooms or any interior spaces beyond the room used for polling. The district is committed to working cooperatively with the town to increase need. At this point, I would like to open this up for conversation, comment, questions from members of the board.
I have a question.
Mr. Weinstein.
Actually, I have a few. Were we told or were we asked that this is where the elections are going to take place?
This is not something we have in saying.
Okay. Were we told or were we asked if it's one police officer or more than that allowed in each school?
So that was the, that was the result of a joint conversation between us and the Warren PD. Okay. And it's, just to clarify, during certain times of the day, it's more than one, but it's at least one in the building. Okay. Thanks. Now might be a good time to mention.
Sure.
So for the benefit, I know we'll talk about this more, but for the benefit of the board and the public, the information about polling, which is coming up here, recorded out for the first time, will be in the community briefing this week, including an invitation to an information session for parents of students in the schools that are affected. That'll be on March twenty-seventh at six P M. It'll be on Zoom and recorded so that people don't have to be there in real time. And we'll include not only district representatives, but importantly, the Warren Police. That way, people can ask questions that are maybe not the board's purview, but are important to parents who might have them. And that'll all go out to parents in those schools, for sure.
Ms. Kujan.
Just a couple of things. First question, I'll ask at the same time. First question is, does this have any budget impact on the school? The town can assist on it, can also pay for it. And then the second one is, since the polling staff will need access to a restroom, should it, logistically possible, be a designated restroom that kids don't use, so there is no cross-site between polling station and park, and no opportunity for there to be any incidents that school don't come out of that?
So the the exact locations have to be cleared by the county election officials before we can commit to certain pieces. That's actually scheduled to happen on Wednesday, I believe. There is a modest budget impact on potentially an overtime for custodial services in the morning, but there is also a modest payment to the district for hosting polling places. But we have expressed to the township a expect, an expectation that we would be made whole for any expenses that come from this.
Then just, just a question about the buses. So I can't remember what time polls open and close, but I assume they're open when buses arrive and they close after buses depart. So with the traffic pattern and logistics is accounted for during those times.
So that is accurate, and that is when there will be additional. So there's a couple of things. There'll be additional police. There'll be communication ahead of time informing voters when the heavier traffic or traffic times are. You can't tell somebody they can't come to vote, obviously, but to try to to help mitigate that. The polls by law are open from, I think it's six A M. to eight P M. So that's what we have to work with. So, and I also want to mention one other piece, which is the primaries on June fourth. They, the township shared with us historical data about voting. There are not a lot of people who vote in person on primary day. The, so it gives us a chance to work through some of these things before we get to a larger election, like the presidential election in November, and to consider other adjustments.
Ms. Zahn. So I'll admit, when I heard this, I was pretty frustrated. I thought by now it would die down, but I say. And I think what I'm frustrated the most about is a lot of schools seem to be moving away from using. A lot, sorry, a lot of, a lot of towns are moving away from using schools as poll locations, or they are closing to allow for. And I feel like the timing of this and the heads up that we have is disappointing. I mean, this is not, this date is always the same. So the first Tuesday in June, first Tuesday in November. And I think that's where I, that option for us to consider closing has essentially been removed because of the lack of advance warning. We, June is, as any parent knows, is an incredibly busy time with end of year ceremonies, moving up things, concerts, fifth grade celebrations, eighth grade celebrations. And so to close with this little notice would be, I imagine, pretty difficult. So I can two things that seem opposing can still be true, which is I have trust that administration and security will do their best efforts to keep everybody safe. I can also feel very uneasy about that. I'm not gonna lie. You know, we, the first update from Mrs. Zahn was about security. We try so hard to ensure that our staff and our students are safe. And so even if it's not thousands of people, it it makes me crazy. I realize we cannot push back. I realize that that would, that is not the right thing to do. I think it's, I respect that we want to be partners and we want to work with the town and the clerk in this request. But I am an N of one very because I feel like without the warning to say, hey, we have June, is that doable? You know, could you, if that's not doable, then then, you know, definitely November, at least we have that time to, if we decide to close. And I just feel like we now have that option removed after we just went through months of figuring out two years of calendars. And everybody knows how complicated that is, right? You're constantly balancing all these things. And so I understand why we are not closing. I hundred percent understand that. But I still am just a bit frustrated that we are in this situation. But I support the direction that the administration is taking. I just am frustrated and I felt like I needed to say that. That's it.
And Tricia, are, are, are we, I'm sorry, that's rich. Sorry, guys. Hi. And, um, are we, are we offering, I, I thought we mentioned we may be offering the ability for a uh, parent to opt to keep their child home if they so choose to. As an excused absence, has that been decided on yet?
It would not be an excuse absence. So that's not a, it's not a state excuse absence. A, a, a parent can always choose to keep their child home, but we can't, we can't excuse it unless it's on a list of state excuse reasons.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members?
Yeah, I, I mean, I am personally not a fan of talking about problem without a resolution, but I don't have a resolution to this. So I, I just want to use a word that Ms. Keller brought up, which is a partnership. We would like to feel like we are partners with the town. This decision was not made through a genuine partnership. If we were told what to do without our input and without the proper runway to put measures in that we feel are appropriate, that's not a partnership. That's one group telling another group what to do without proper feedback and time to be able to be true partners. So it's disappointing to have this be told to us at, let's be honest, probably the most conflicted and passionately driven election year in our lifetime. And now we are having it at our schools. Not cool. At all.
Mr. Tor.
For the presidential election in November, I think, um, this is an interesting point. Can we add the option to relook at the school calendar that mentioned?
That, that, the calendar is definitely a board, um, decision. There's just one thing I want to mention is currently it's a half day for parent conferences. So there are some implications contractually that we'd have to work through, but that is something we can certainly look at. My recommendation would be that we see how it goes in June and use that information to make a decision about.
I, I agree with you. No, I would come in. The big one, yeah, November. Yeah.
Mr. Otto.
I just want to clarify. Were, were we told we had to? Or was it a discussion? I just want to clarify that with Tom.
It's, it's my understanding. It's my understanding that the authority and responsibility for designating polling locations lies with the township election official, who in this case is also the township. I mean, so that individual has the authority and responsibility for designating polling places. Um, we do not have authority to bring on as board, as a board of education.
But the town did come to us and ask us.
Sure.
Yeah. So we had a meeting about the implementation process, not about, yes or no. I don't think I can say more without getting into legal, um, but no problem. What Mrs. On is saying is that there is an authority that is not us, uh, there is not, it's not the board that gets to make the final decision. Yeah. But there was a, I would say, a good faith conversation about what do we need to do to make it.
And, and it's my understanding the town committee has demonstrated the commitment and willingness, particularly on safety issues to, to meet our needs. Yeah.
I, I would say not only the town committee, but I think also the council of administration.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I'm not saying that I don't have confidence in their ability to potentially meet those requests. Uh, I, I just don't feel like this was done in the spirit of true partnership. And I, I please don't take my, uh, my previous tone and potential vitriol as directed at this board because it's not. Uh, I, I just feel like this was a decision made for us and not with us.
Any other board comments on this topic?
I think just to create, just to, um, sort of complement what Dr. Mingle said around the, the info session. I'm correct if I'm wrong, the info session that's being scheduled is to help parents understand what the process looks like. There'll be, you know, opportunity to ask questions in advance. But if there are, like if I was just a parent right now and I was wondering what to do and how would this get to be, or I think it's a terrible idea, I think it's a great idea, that we can't, we can't do anything. So we, you know, we're all, we always want to hear from people, but this, we're not the best suited to answer questions about how'd you get here, why? That's, we are, we're best suited to once it's the implementation of it and how it would work on the day of, but not questions around how we got there. So I just want to make sure people are.
Anything else? Okay. I'll move on to the final item on the finance committee agenda, um, which was the rod grant update. The district has received final approval on the rod grants for the middle school science lab HBAC and has reviewed the proposal from the architect for services related to the rod grant. The architect's fee was negotiated down from forty thousand to twenty seven thousand and appears on tonight's agenda for approval as item B eight. Also on tonight's agenda as items B ten, B eleven, and B twelve are the related rod grant approvals of execution and delivery of the grant agreement, delegation of authority to the VA to supervise the school facilities project, and use of capital funds to fund our portion of the HBAC work, which, um, as a reminder, by virtue of doing this work with the rod grant, we are not paying the full amount of this. We are receiving, um, a contribution from the state. And so this is with great thanks to Mr. Havel and the business office staff in securing this grant for the HBAC work. And on that note, the next meeting of the finance committee is, um, on the eleventh of March. And that's all for finance. Um, the next committee report is personnel negotiations and communication committee, Ms. Kelly.
I won't be able to say as much. So, um, the personnel negotiations and communications committee, uh, met on January twenty second and February fourteen, which were our third and fourth negotiation sessions with W T E A. And we are, uh, scheduled to have our fifth one on March thirteen.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Um, at this time, we move into the first opportunity for public commentary. Um, this is the first of two opportunities for public commentary. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board, please raise their hand or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address and by directing your comments to the presiding officer. That would be me. Please know that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but it is not intended as a Q and A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent may make some statements. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second opportunity for all other comments that are in the meeting. So at this time, seeing nobody in audience, the live audience, we're going to move to Zoom. And if there's anybody in our Zoom audience that would like to make a comment related to the agenda, please use your raise your hand feature at this time. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close public commentary?
Motion opposed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain. First public commentary is closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have anything you'd like to address on the agenda?
Just two items. One, you, you hit on in your comments, which is item B seven, which is a grant uh, for a local history trip for fourth grade students. Some may remember that this was actually in place pre-COVID. This grant helps bring it back. It's a really nice way for our fourth graders who are learning about state history to see some of, there's a lot of great history right here in Warren Township. It is a good way for them to experience that. The other thing I wanted to point out was item D two. At the very bottom of the long list of policies that came from Strauss Esme, there's one there that says W T S as the source, which is us. About a year ago or so, the board adopted an updated harassment intimidation or bullying policy. And in it, there were two options for what you do with a, a case that is, uh, that probably can't be supported with facts to become a confirmed case. We chose an option that did not give any principal the discretion to not go through the entire process. We are recommending reversing that because we have seen several anonymous H I B allegations, for example, which can't be found because there's no victim named. And by having to go through the entire process, we use a lot of resources to get to a place where we say we can't even finish this investigation. By giving the principals the option to say that upfront, we can save those resources for students who are in the building and, and needs that they have. It's important to note for the board and the public that if any principal uses that discretion, they have to report it to me and I have to report it to the board. So you would have a record of that. And it provides whoever filed it, if it wasn't anonymous, an ability to appeal directly to the board. So I just wanted you to note the background of that because it did a change in practice, but there are safeguards in place to make sure it's not used to avoid investigating an actual issue.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Does anyone on the board wish to call any action item for separate vote or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kelly.
Motion to approve items for consideration, A one through A three, B one through B twelve, C one through C thirteen, and D one through D three.
Have a second?
Sir. All right. I will call the roll. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfeta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Motion care, motions carry seven zero.
Thank you. We do not have any unfinished business on the agenda for this evening. We do have an item under new business. Um, we are nearing the end of the five-year strategic plan. And, um, looking to have the board approves the creation of an ad hoc strategic plan committee for the purpose of beginning to look at planning for our next five years. So does the board have any thoughts, concerns, questions, comments? Ms. Kelly, you had a resolution for this. That's interesting.
I can, I can read it if that helps. So the proposed resolution would be resolved that the Board of Education approves the creation of an ad hoc strategic plan committee. This committee, I guess that's probably all that needs to be in the actual resolution. But what I, just for the board's benefit, I'll just repeat kind of the, the charge of the committee, which is to help identify facilitators of that process, work with the administration to plan the process, and then represent the board on the steering committee for the strategic plan, which was the description that we used five years ago when we did it.
Ms. Keller, would you need that resolution?
I wish. Motion to approve the resolution about creating a ad hoc strategic planning committee.
Sir. So, yeah. Yeah. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfeta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Does any board member have anything else for new business? Any weapon's been previously authorized. Okay. At this point, we're moving into the second opportunity for public commentary, and it is open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes and please state your name and address from the beginning. We have nobody in our audience since we have athletes left. So going directly to Zoom. Um, use the raise your hand feature on Zoom if you wish to be, if you wish to speak. Last chance, anybody? Okay, then. Do I have a motion to close second public commentary?
Motion opposed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. The second public commentary is now closed. Um, Ms. Keller, would you move us into the second?
Whereas the open held meetings are scheduled at eleven, and if the board had to meet and close a session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education turns the closed session to discuss reflective bargaining agreements and more negotiations related to it. Action will not be taken upon the term public session. The length of the meeting can just be too long to explain it. Be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. The board is now in executive session.